I'd like to call this meeting to order and start with a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'll leave that. Nick Champa, I am here. Amy Arcewalla is not here. Deborah Kelly, you're here. Ayesha, you're here. Agnes, you're here. Mayor Kramer. Kevin McNeil, yes. Tiana Gresham has called apparently and is not going to be here. And January Adams. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law. Schedule and notification of this meeting have been provided to The Courier-News, The Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the library's vestibule and are available at the reference desks. Is there any member of the public who would like to make us say anything at this point? There will be another public session at the end. Seeing none, we look for approval of the minutes of the June 18 meeting. Now, I think that some people have not gotten it. So, January, would you like to read those minutes? Because why should we vote on something we haven't read?
Nick Champa called the meeting to order at 5:45 PM. Pledge of allegiance. He stated that the meeting was being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act and welcomed the mayor's new liaison, Deborah Kelly, to the board. Roll call. Kevin McNeil was excused. Nick Champa was here. Deborah Kelly was present. Ayesha Ali was here. Mayor Kramer was present. Amy Arcewalla was absent. Tiana Gresham was present. Agnes Coolabania was excused. And January Adams was present. Nick opened the meeting in public comment. There being no comments, the meeting was closed to public comments. Tiana motioned to approve the minutes of the May 28, 2025 meeting. Debbie seconded and all were in favor. January presented the financial reports of the director's report for the month of May. The financial reports were filed for audit. January highlighted various aspects of the narrative section of her monthly report. She noted that the Adult Services Department held 46 adult programs that 668 people attended. Youth Services Department held 41 programs that 1,298 people enjoyed. The library participated in the Township's gay pride day by staffing a table at the event. All of the library's summer reading challenges would begin on June 23, and the Lewis Street Coordinator hosted an information table at the Youth Resources Fair on May 31. President's report, none. Correspondence and communications. One, two, five articles. The first one was "White House fires librarian of Congress." Second was "Copyright Office finds itself in the crosshairs." Third was "Judge orders halt to IMLS dismantling." Fourth was "Stacked against them." And the fifth was "Showdown looms over Library of Congress." Old business, none. New business, none. Debbie motioned to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations regarding a donation proposal to rename the children's section of the library and to discuss the director's compensation for fiscal year '25-'26. Ayesha seconded. All were in favor, and the executive session began at 5:54. Ayesha motioned to move the meeting out of executive session at 6:18 PM. Tiana seconded and all were in favor. Tiana motioned to approve the gift agreement contract between the family of Francis and Anna Diamante and the Board of Trustees of the Franklin Township Public Library as amended by the donor. Ayesha seconded. Roll call, vote. Nick Champa, yes. Debbie Kelly, yes. Ayesha, yes. Tiana, yes. January explained that the board had just approved a charitable gift of $40,000 to the library from Jennifer Kellogg on behalf of Francis and Anna Diamante. This gift would be recognized by honoring the Diamante twins' sisters' 100 years of teaching in Franklin schools and would include naming the youth services area of the library as the Francis and Anna Diamante Wing and the placement of a plaque inscribed with the sisters' biographical and contribution to the township's schools nearby. Debbie motioned to increase the director's salary to $159,000 for fiscal school year '25-'26 effective July 1, 2025. Tiana seconded. Roll call, vote. Nick Champa, yes. Debbie Kelly, yes. Ayesha Ali, yes. Tiana Gresham, yes. Nick opened the meeting for public comment. There were no comments, so the meeting was closed to public comments. The next meeting will be August 27, 2025. Tiana motioned to adjourn. Debbie seconded. All were in favor, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:23.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept these minutes as so nicely read by January?
I'll motion to accept the minutes.
Kevin? Is there a second? Ayesha, second. Is there any discussion of this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hands. Those opposed?
I didn't abstain because I wasn't here.
You don't need to be at a meeting.
Does it matter?
Right.
Does it matter?
The motion has passed anonymously. Moving on to our director's reports. The financial report, which would be for the month of July.
So we begin.
Yes. The first month of our fiscal year. January, would you like to point out any items that you feel would need discussion?
Let's see, on the all branches, line 918, Equipment Service, that one is so large because we had to pay the service contract on the security gates. Director's discretionary fund was a purchase of letters, individual letters with the signage for the Diamante sisters and the facts. We had to get a new fax from the public. And not line 938, the photocopier, that was, we had to buy a new copier scanner for the branch. So that's why those are out of line for that one month. There was nothing really on the Franklin Park branch.
Those are not recurring?
No.
Yeah, they're one shots. They're not something that we'd expect to go on at that rate each month. Would you like to go on to your program reports?
The young adult librarian and the outreach librarian went to the Zoo Fall Health Event and National Night Out on July, August 4th and 5th. They were very busy. They gave away a lot of stuff and met a lot of people. The summer reading challenge concluded on August 11. The adult challenge had 140 participants. They recorded 210,170 minutes. There were 81 teens. They read a total of 1,392 hours. And 288 children read for 76,871 minutes. The Adult Services Department had 46 programs that 576 people attended. The Youth Services Department held 53 in-house programs that 1,980 people enjoyed. I think that was it.
Does anyone have any questions for January about her operations report?
I'm just impressed by the number of people that come to read. Kids, especially the kids. I'm very impressed with that.
Yes.
The staff works very, very hard on that and do a lot of work to encourage people to do it. People that are, people that participate get a lot of praise and encouragement to stay and do it.
Okay. I have no president's report today. We can move on to discuss correspondence, although some of us did not receive it yet. Would anyone like to? Would anyone who has seen the correspondence like to make any comments?
I just thought they were interesting. I mean, it seems like an assault on intelligence. I don't know what the endgame is.
Yeah.
Well, it seems politically motivated and I don't think it's a good thing for anybody. But thanks for getting the information out. I guess being aware of the things that are going on. My father used to say, "Forewarned is forearmed." So, thank you.
This is the American Library Association?
Yeah, I mean, all of them had the same kind of...
Same theme.
The same theme, you know. The federal cuts. And it just seems to be an assault on intellect, you know. Libraries and books and colleges and everything. So, but anyway, I guess we'll get through it.
I didn't know that eBooks were more expensive than regular books. That I found very interesting.
They were, they really have a silverback.
They were much more expensive.
Yes.
Why is that? I mean...
Because they can, I guess.
There's no, there's no... Because it would seem like it would be less, right?
Yeah.
Because there's less material and less space.
Right, no wear and tear, like no depreciation, I'll call it. Yeah, I found that really interesting because I mainly do eBooks myself.
That's probably why.
Because of me?
Not you specifically.
Debbie's growing up on bill.
I'm talking about, you know, supply and demand, right? So it's like more people.
But it's great when you travel. Like we used to have to bring heavy books and now it's like you just load up your Kindle or your iPad and...
Well, but January has talked to us about eBooks before and one of the things, I think, January, that you said was that you don't really own anything because you pay a fee for, to rent it for a period of time and...
They take it away.
And then it's gone. So how do we build a collection of books?
And let me ask you, can, is there still a... If I remember correctly, there's still a certain number that can be... You know, once you, once you have the eBook, you know, for people to check out, there's a certain number.
Yeah, once, well, we limit people. We limit, I think it's five right now with the hoopla because we're paying every time somebody, in addition to everything else, we pay every time somebody takes it out.
So I mean, like, so if you have one copy of the book and can 80 people take out that one copy at the same time, right? It's still a finite number of... So you might have five copies. I mean, I don't know how many, but it's a, it's a, it's a number, right?
We only have one copy.
You only have one copy of each one.
Yeah, yeah.
So once somebody takes that out, either, like a...
One person at a time.
One person at a time.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like a real book.
It's like a book.
It's like a hard book.
That's what I'm saying. So once they take it out, it's not like six people can have it at the same time.
So if I want this book, I can go on the waiting list for it if you have it.
Right, okay.
It's not like you think, like we could all have the same book at the same time.
Right, that's what you would, you would, you would...
It's like a, it's like a real book. I don't know how to say it.
Except it is a lot more.
Isn't it? Isn't it odd?
It disappears.
It disappears.
After a while.
And the other part of that is, we're not buying these books in a vacuum. We also have to be on a, like, platform. And that's hugely expensive to have the access to the books.
Just to be able to buy them.
This is the actual cost.
Yeah, you'd think that would be cheaper, like more efficient, more, you know. But it's not.
But do we know, like, do you, do you have an idea if there's more eBooks that are reserved versus hardcover books or e-books?
It's still in the minority, but I would expect it's going to grow.
Yeah. Books are still the minority.
Yeah.
Probably because...
I could even tell you at the next meeting specifically what's been circulated. It's in our State A report. But right now, it's not, it's not as, it's not more than the books. The fiscal books.
I think I contributed to it. I still like the hardcover.
Did you? Oh, you did.
I get tired of looking at a screen.
Me too.
Yeah, because when I read a book, I'm like, oh, this is nice. And I go back to like the Kindle. I'm like, okay, but then, yeah.
Like you said, it depends on what you're doing. If you're home. And in a lounge, too, you might want to have the book. But if you're waiting in the airport or you're on a train.
Yeah, I'm traveling this week, next week, so I'm like, yeah, I'm looking at my iPad.
The discussion has come up among my family members, starting with someone making a statement. We don't need books anymore. Anything we want is online. However, now, nonfiction books might be in the minority. But a nonfiction book gets treated, at least by me, quite differently than a fiction book. So I might leaf through a nonfiction book and see things that I become interested in. You don't do that with an electronic book. An encyclopedia was a, was a good example. Remember those?
Yeah.
Well, I didn't pick it up to look up this particular thing, but here it is.
Very interesting.
There is, there is a difference in... How many, what percentage is nonfiction? Is it less than 20?
I don't know.
It's a small, it's a small, it's a... Would you agree, though, that it's a smaller number than the...
Fiction, yeah. Electronic books, you mean?
No.
No. A book's about, let's say, science. Chemistry book, physics book, biology book. Or a history book, which is nonfiction. Okay.
What happens when people are in a really club and you have to read from the eBooks? How do you manage that?
They don't read from the eBooks.
Oh, they take the hard copies?
We have, we have book club kits, actually, where you can take out a bag. It's got 10 books in it.
Is it 10? Yeah, it's 10.
So they're, they're still, they're reading print.
Okay.
Yeah. But in my book club, if we buy books, certain people will buy the hard book or people will buy the eBook. You do what you like. Or people will get on the waiting list here. Some people in my group live in Hillsborough or one woman lives in Princeton. Or they'll go to the county. So they may get it from a different branch because most of us live here in Franklin. So people are duking it out a lot if it's a, you know, resale lease.
But your book club members, I guess, are all aware of the fact that we have borrowing equipment.
Yes, we've used, yeah, we've used the kits and yes, we've used the county. We're all aware of the county appropriations. So, yes. We're all good librarians.
Does that work in that borrowing?
That's great. It made everybody very happy.
Yeah, it's the new director.
He's there.
Did you know him from his last stint?
Not really.
Okay. The Somerset County Library, Brian O'Jay, has retired and the person they hired to replace him is the person he replaced some years back. He came back from Salt Lake City. Well, how about old business? Anyone have any old business to bring up?
I do. I'm thinking about the charging stations. What happened to that?
Charging stations.
Charging stations?
Yeah, for the car, for the electronic cars.
Oh, for the cars, oh.
We haven't heard much about a new charging station. Can you fill us in on anything here?
Well, we want, the town wants to install one. You want a better one.
I want a level three, yes. Which is more expensive. Way more expensive. But the thing is, we have two Level 2s right across the parking lot and their usage is sort of low, rather low. And what I had told Mayor Kramer is that it would be a much better service to the community to somewhere put a Level 3 charger. Now, I live in a 55-plus community and we've just put in, we have a couple of Level 2s, but we've just put in a double Level 3. It's a big, it's a big deal.
What's the difference in the time it takes to charge a car?
Quite.
Level 2, I think, is 44 miles an hour. So every hour you can put 44 miles on the car. Obviously, it depends on the car and many things. Level 3 can be 200, 300 miles an hour.
That's, wow, that's significant.
I had pointed out a proposed location for a Level 3.
Which is not available.
It's not available, but it has the power right there. Yeah. And it's the Old Middle Bush School, which is right near here. It's, when, will that be opening this next month or...
No. We're still figuring things out.
Okay. It's, but it will be a preschool, is that...
That's the current plan.
Yeah.
The reason why I asked, I thought this one, the two that are here were for the police vans because the advertisement is not known. I don't know if many people know about it. The two that are up here. I've been seeing it, but I thought it was for only police vehicles.
No, they're their own.
They have, they have 10 of their own in the back. Not, not, not these two in the main parking lot, but a separate parking lot where there are 10 Level 2s. And I'm not sure it's only police. Maybe, is it some of the other public...
The ones, the ones that are almost adjacent to the current, the two we've been talking about are for the construction code.
Okay.
I don't know a police charger, but there may be one.
Is there any other old business to discuss?
Yes, did we ever resolve anything about the young lady that brought up the little free library at that park? Was it Delar Park?
Did we resolve anything?
I don't, I remember, Phil, you were going to talk to Billy Connell or... I don't remember.
And Nick was going to build a...
I think what we said was that the library would not, the public library would not be building them, but we could very well supply them.
We could contribute some of the books.
And that the actual construction would be up to the public.
Someone could volunteer.
And I think I did say I would volunteer to build one, but I haven't heard anything back yet. I would volunteer as a member of the public, not as... Not committing the library to the... Is there any new business?
Yes, I respectfully wonder if we want to revisit the policy of renting out the rooms. You like it substantially in time. I'd like to understand that better.
Okay, we don't rent the rooms.
Right, right, good point.
And I will point out that the policy was approved by the board some years ago.
I'm not pointing any fingers.
Okay. And we need the two weeks because the rooms are not open to everybody and we have to check people out. They fill out a form. They have to be a nonprofit. The person who's running the meeting has to have a card in the library and it takes a while for us to check those things out. That was the reason.
Now I understand.
And you, people, well, not rent out, but... What am I trying to say? They reserve rooms?
Right, right, they can reserve it on, yeah. What they have to do is they, the first time they do it, they fill out a form and they say what they want it for, who they are, that kind of thing. And then we check them out. And after that, they can reserve a room online as long as it's open.
And this, they have to be...
Nonprofit, yeah.
And when you say nonprofit, do they have to be a 501(c)(3) or just they're not making, they're not a business?
We often ask for that, but sometimes we don't, you know. It varies. But we do, we do prefer that, if they have that. And I will add, since we're talking about this, that I've talked about renovating the inside of this part of the library. And one of the things that I would like to add, and there are plans that you're going to see soon, are more rooms, more meeting rooms. So that should alleviate a lot of the problems.
In what space will they go?
They will be all over.
But they'll take up some book space now or sitting space?
Some of the sitting space. It's a very clever rearrangement of things. There's room, actually, for everything. We've been reading a lot of the books because, like we were discussing, people aren't taking out as many print books as they used to. So we've done a lot of reading. We have the room and...
Okay, we're not going outside the walls?
No, no.
And is there always demand for people wanting to...
Yes, yes. And we're going to have some that are just for one person, some that are for a small group and some are for larger people, larger groups. Weight watchers.
Six feet two, six feet three.
Basketball team.
So how many rooms are you thinking of?
I'd have to look. I don't know how many there are. There may be five or six. More than what we have now.
They are in high demand.
They are. And I'm hoping to bring you the plans next meeting, the September meeting, so you can see it for yourselves.
Are they charged? Do they pay?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you, Phil, for bringing that up. Is there any other new business? It's time for a second part of our public comment portion. Come on. Anybody? No? Okay. Our next meeting is scheduled for September 24th this year. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I motion, could we adjourn?
Kevin wants to adjourn. Agnes agrees with him, seconded. Any discussion about adjournment? Those in favor of adjournings? This is the anonymous. Well, Phil did.
I don't vote.
He doesn't vote. Agnes, you're not going to be here in September?
No, not this, not that date. So I'm asking for to be excused because I'll be in Texas.
In Texas? You get around.
Yeah. I'm going to North Carolina tomorrow. My childhood friend, his dad is in 1996. My childhood friend, his dad is in 1996.